Mikes on, mikes on. Welcome. Welcome to your town meeting. The town clerk has informed me that we met a quorum of fifty people at last count. I declare the September 5th, 2025 special town meeting in session. To give you all a heads up about what is about to happen, we will do an invocation as is required by our bylaws, the pledge of allegiance, and then I will announce a brief recess. So you all know what's happening? I just wanted to give you the heads up, and I'll say it again. To honor the work that our service members do for our country every day, our invocation will be read by a veteran. Donald Olshavsky is a U.S. Navy Vietnam veteran, Purple Heart recipient, and Combat Action Ribbon recipient. He was born in Springfield, grew up in Thompsonville, Connecticut, married Donna Jean, and has four children and six grandchildren. He's a graduate of Springfield Technical Community College and has also served the public as a justice of the peace, notary public, retired postal worker. He's part of the American Legion Post 175, third junior vice commander, Chapter 11 Westover, and several other organizations. Will you join me in welcoming him to the podium for our invocation?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm honored. I'm touched. We have come together in a civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I'm right" and saying "I believe I'm right", and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. Let us always remember that, in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olshavsky. Now I would like for us to welcome Jas Lassanta, an eighth grader in Long Meadow. She is also a champion swimmer in the Pioneer Valley Swim League. She does the butterfly, in case anybody wondered. She will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence immediately after. Would all those who are able, please rise and remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you both. I'm gonna go back to your seats. As I had mentioned at the very start, I recognize that the line is long. To ease in the processing of people, to make sure that they come in and get seated, we will be taking a fifteen-minute recess. Once I declare the recess, I wanted to let you know what will happen after that. We're going to be doing a quick test of the clicker system. I will tell you what happens when we do that, when we are in the recess. After I bring us out of recess, I have some housekeeping matters to share with you before we get started with the real business that you all here for. So I declare that we are taking a fifteen-minute recess, starting at 7:06. This is that part that I just told you about where we're testing our clickers. Peter, are you able and ready? We are going to do a test vote of your clickers so that everybody is comfortable with them, and I would ask that you kindly listen to this test. We're gonna ask, you don't have to vote in this test vote, but we would ask that... We're going to call three random numbers that are on your clickers, and if you're one of those lucky numbers, you'll come up to the front and you'll see that your vote was recorded. So, test vote on whether butterfly is the best swimming stroke. It really doesn't matter in the course of things, except to Jas. So press 1 for yes and press 2 for no. The vote is now open for the test vote. Peter, are you ready for this? Okay. Do they vote?
Woo hoo!
Peter, do you wanna call it? Is it... We're gonna leave the vote open for just a few more seconds while votes are trickling in. The vote is now closed. And again, this is a test vote. We are in recess at the moment. If you have lucky clicker number two, lucky clicker number eighty-nine, or lucky clicker number three sixty-nine, would you come on down? Who's got it? We've got a winner! Thank you. You haven't won anything, but it feels really good. Come on over this way, please, all around here. These numbers were drawn at random by our town clerk. Could I ask each one of you to go to the screen that Peter Babbel of Meridia Technologies, who is assisting tonight? Look at the screen, tell him what... Show him your clicker, before you see your vote. Show him your clicker. So number two. And number two recorded a yes, and it's correct? How about number eighty-nine? Was it correct? And number three sixty-nine? All right. Do you confirm? Do a thumbs up for folks? Yes. All of their votes were recorded accurately. So thank you for your patience in trying the clickers. Thank you. Another announcement, a lost phone. If this is someone you know, the phone is missing. It's got a red poppy case. Carson and Quinn is on the outside. And there's no other identifiable information other than a woman and a child in the picture. Is this your phone? Your friend's phone? I'll take your word for it. All right, so as I said, we're in recess. After fifteen minutes, we'll begin the business. Nick, are we all set? I declare the recess over. I want to thank the musicians who performed. Those clubs who are providing some food for us tonight. Yeah, let's do it. And the myriad volunteers throughout the building, inside and out, who've been here over weekends, nights, getting this set up. Please join me in thanking them and the town staff. To any first-time voters and to our visitors, I offer a special welcome. It's not usually this exciting. Town meeting is our local legislature, and for those who are newer to it, there are several rules that may be new to you. If you don't know how to do something, ask. There's some general housekeeping announcements that I have and some rules of procedure to mention before deliberation and vote on our one warrant article. In the event of a fire alarm or other emergency, exits are clearly marked, and all of the fire department staff will be in red polo shirts to be identifiable to the attendees. Trust me, they're responsive. Should you need a hearing assistive device, inform a teller or someone at the clerk's desks, and we shall loan you one. If you or any children need to stretch your legs, there are spaces in the hallway, especially behind here, where you can find a quiet spot. We also have a quiet place... It's not the quiet place, but it is a place that is quiet in family care or a lactation room available at the nurse's office near the main office. Should we need to hear... With expertise or specialized knowledge of the project before town meeting, I permit some non-voters to speak. Town department heads, directors, and the superintendent of schools may speak on matters related to their departments. In addition, the following non-voters have received prior permission to speak: Alan Minkus of Colliers, Christian Witsett, George G. Martin, Jean E. Christie, Brian Jerib, Greg Lucas, David Fontaine Jr., Mark Ad Bella, and Ryan Morrison. We are a legally-defined legislative body in open town meeting. It's legally a different kind of entity than other gatherings of people, even in government. It's different than a select board meeting. It's not a public comment time. It's not a public forum. It is its own beast in the mass general laws. Because it's not a forum or any of these other kinds of things, it's fundamentally different, especially from any privately-owned platforms like those on social media. So there are things that you can do in a public comment time, things that you can do on social media, that you cannot do here. So the legal difference means that there are differences in how we conduct our deliberations. My role as moderator is spelled out in state law and several other places. I have trained and sworn in assistant moderators who will regulate order in overflow rooms when this room reaches capacity. They have the authority granted by mass general law to assistant moderators. They are also very kind people serving the town, and if they inform you of rules and regulations, please follow them. At the most basic level, discussion is focused on the question before us. So the main motion as spoken on the article in the warrant, the agenda, it sets the bounds of what we can discuss, and my job is to keep us focused on the issues. Our community comes together in various ways. One of those ways is shared decision-making, accomplished through listening to each other, consideration of advantages and... And a recognition that even if our position fails to win the vote, we have been heard and are part of the process. We adhere to a set of rules that guide our work. The rules of procedure that guide our work are drawn from the Massachusetts General Laws, our town charter, our bylaws, and the latest edition of this book, Town Meeting Time, which is the rulebook for town meetings. It's not Robert's Rules of Order, if you're familiar with that. It's its own entity. Town Meeting Time guides us. To wait, I'm sorry, to speak, wait for recognition from me, the moderator, and state your name and address. ... to the moderator, and this includes questions. Comments in favor or opposed are about two minutes long. All remarks and questions should be concise, on topic, and civil. Should you have questions about how to accomplish something, ask me. Should you have any questions for experts, I will direct your question to the appropriate person. If they do not answer the question to your satisfaction, weigh that into your decision-making. We're not getting into cross-examination here. Follow-up questions are not permitted, and you have one minute to ask all of your questions. If I need to ask you to do something, I will do that. We vote on motions on or under the article. Now, you're aware, as you heard from my colleague Nick, testing the... Different overflow rooms. We have several overflow rooms that connect via audio and visual. Each room is led by an assistant moderator and support staff. Each space in the Zoom webinar that connects the rooms is as a panelist. So, for example, cafeteria, auditorium, Business Technology Center. Each laptop in an overflow room will be connected to a screen in the room to display the Zoom meeting. The raise hand icon will be used for each overflow room to identify if there is someone there to speak on a question. The town staff assigned to the laptop will raise and lower the hand icon. If you are in an overflow room, your assistant moderator will ask you if you wish to speak and what is your name, address, and whether you have a question, are opposed, or in favor of the motion under consideration. So please listen to those motions. Your assistant moderator will write your name and information down and direct the staff to use the raise hand icon. I will rotate the discussion from this room, the gym, to the auditorium, followed by the cafeteria, and followed again by the Business Technology Center, and then, if needed, the classroom spaces and atrium. There is a possibility to hear of somebody with a question, someone who's opposed, and someone in favor before I turn to the next room. So you see that there are three microphones in the center here? If you want to speak in this room, you would line up at those microphones. But keep in mind, we'll hear from three here before we move to the next room. When I recognize you, stand in front of the laptop if you are in an overflow room. Just stay right there at those mics if you're in here. Your face will now be beaming throughout the high school. And trust me, there's no way you can really embarrass yourself. State your name and address and your remarks or questions. I urge you, only new information, please, and not repetition. It's in the interest of the meeting. If I nudge you along and say, please, new information, if you continue to dwell on a topic that has been raised already, I will invite you to return to your seat. Most voters are using electronic voting devices, which we tested in the recess. Some, if they are in the overflow classrooms, will have received a voting card. I want to explain the procedures for voting. Everyone needs to keep their device or card on them at all time, whether standing or sitting or going to the restroom. Only when I announce, "Is the vote open?", should you press a button. And I remind you that you have to press the button, not the letters next to it. There's the actual button. No vote will be received otherwise. Once the vote is open, you would press 1 for yes and 2 for no. If you see a number 1 and the word "okay", a yes vote was received. If you see a number 2 and an "okay", a no vote was received. And there's nothing more to do. Once you see that, kindly wait. You saw that when we were doing our test vote, we had nine hundred thirty-five clickers in use. We have more than that now. Keep in mind that people's bodies act as a barrier. So if you feel really like you want to make sure that your vote gets to the receiver, which is way up there, you can feel free to raise it above your shoulder and click the button there. Once, again, once you see that "okay", you're good. Don't press it again, please. We will wait until all of the tallies are completed. So we have voters in here. We have voters in the cafeteria and the auditorium likely. The Business Technology Center voters would be on a different system. So this is important. Normally at town meetings, you see the tally displayed, and the vote is instantaneous. Tonight, it will not be. We will have to get the tallies from the Business Technology Center and other rooms before I declare what the vote is. So there will be some time. And I invite your patience to have a workout tonight. We have tested the vote. If anyone has any trouble with their device, see someone with a yellow vest or someone with the blue polo shirts. So we can troubleshoot immediately. So when I announce that the vote is open, you press your vote, press the button. If you don't see that "okay", go to see somebody before the vote is closed. I will leave the vote open for probably around three minutes, unless I see that no new votes are trickling in. We're not gonna wait two minutes if there are no new votes coming in. And again, then we've gotta wait for the other rooms to make sure that their count is accurate. I will tally all of the votes up. If something requires a two-thirds vote, I have a spreadsheet that I'm using. To do that counting, the town clerk and town council will also be adding those numbers up and doing independent counts. And so before I announce any vote, I will confer with my colleagues to make sure we are all on the same page. I think that's all for voting. Is there anything else for voting that we need to mention? We're responsible for the community that we formed together. Long Meadow honors the spirit of democracy that overcame tyranny in the American Revolution and draws inspiration from the examples of our predecessors in the work that we do to engage our neighbors and friends in democratic self-governance. And you are part of that mighty experiment in democracy. I am going to turn now to the first order of business, a motion on Article 1. I invite Michaela Fitzgerald to come to the center microphone here and read the motion. State your name and address, please.
Michaela Fitzgerald, 275 Burbank Road. I move that. The town of Long Meadow appropriate the amount of $151,594,774 for the purpose of paying cost of the final design and construction of a consolidated Glenn Brook and Williams Middle School at the location of Williams Middle School, 410 Williams Street, Long Meadow, Mass. Including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto the project. The new consolidated middle school shall have an anticipated useful life as an... Sorry, I'm on my tippy toes. No, I lost my spot.
As an educational facility.
As an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least fifty years, of at least fifty years. And for which the town of Long Meadow may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Middle School Building Committee. To meet the appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow set amount under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling body, enabling authority. The town of Long Meadow acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further than any grant that town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1, 56.37% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or 2, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Massachusetts General Law, 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. I will be recognizing Michaela Fitzgerald, Nicole Schwanier, and Marty O'Shea for a presentation. I invite them to the front of the room, and we will get the presentation loaded shortly. I have granted them ten minutes for a presentation. Let me know when it's all set, ready. If you can just wait until we make sure that it's ready. All right, you may begin.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. My name is Marty O'Shea, and I'm proud to serve as your superintendent of schools. And I'm very pleased to see such a strong turnout tonight. As you know, we are here for residents to consider funding the design and construction of a new consolidated middle school. This evening's decision will require a two-thirds vote. As I begin, I want to briefly frame tonight's presentation. Our presentation will cover several areas, and we will welcome your questions at the conclusion. To begin, we'll touch on the journey that brought us to this momentous occasion here tonight. We'd like to highlight some of the key educational advantages associated with this project, focus also on the comprehensive and very thorough approach to safety that has guided this project since its inception, and then we'd also like to overview our position that this proposal is the most fiscally-conscious, cost-effective approach that we can recommend. Following my remarks, School Committee Vice Chair Nicole Schwanier and School Committee Chair Michaela Fitzgerald will discuss the implications of a failed vote, and more importantly, the exciting implications... the exciting implications of a successful vote for the town of Long Meadow. Our journey began... Next slide, please. Our journey began in two thousand and seven, when Long Meadow first applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. At that time, the high school project ultimately took priority, but in around two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, we began to reengage with the MSBA. In two thousand and twenty-one, following a facility condition assessment study, we resubmitted to the MSBA after a few unsuccessful attempts. And in March of twenty-two, we are excited to be formally accepted into the MSBA's core program. As you can see, it takes a lot of time, attention, and work to get the attention of the MSBA. That fall, the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, town meeting approved funding for a major feasibility study, and the school building committee began to study preferred options. The committee studied around thirteen options, from base repair projects to renovation and addition projects, to new construction on both Glenbrook and Williams site. After a thorough and very public process, we identified a new combined school at the Williams site as the preferred solution. Next slide, please. As your Superintendent, I couldn't be more excited to share some of the educational advantages associated with this project. There are many. I could be before you for a couple of hours, but in respect to your time, I'd like to highlight a few. To begin, safety. Modern security, modern accessibility, and modern life safety systems, things that we currently lack. The new school will offer also better air quality, better thermal comfort, and the type of lighting that we know is supportive of student learning nowadays. Needless to say, the new school would include modern classrooms with new equipment, new furniture, updated instructional technologies that promote learning in the twenty-first century. Just letting our slide deck catch up. Additionally, we are anticipating stronger programming with more teachers, more students under one roof. We know that we can unlock the flexibility and capacity to broaden programs, services, and electives and better match those things with individual student need. Inclusive spaces. The building design will support our commitment to inclusive learning and provide better spaces for delivering special education services. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. Safety. From its early administrative team and our design team have worked closely with town departments and residents to create a campus that reflects twenty-first century transportation patterns and is responsible, is responsive to concerns about traffic and congestion. Next slide, please. And next slide. Thank you. To begin campus design, on campus, we're anticipating a campus that includes separate dedicated bus lanes for buses, cars, and service vehicles. Also on campus, you can anticipate a traffic signal at the east driveway, a large network of pedestrian walkways, and most importantly, ample space for drop-off and pickup with the idea to keep traffic off on campus and off nearby streets. Off campus, we've worked closely with police, fire, and DPW to plan improvements, including a new sidewalk along Williams Street, a raised crosswalk on Williams Street with a flashing beacon, and a new turn lane on Williams for cars entering campus. Next slide, please. As we've discussed the safety advantages and the educational advantages, we also want to propose to you that this offers the most cost-effective, long-term option for this community. The building committee has documented that the time and cost of renovating two buildings exceeds that of a new project and would not provide the educational benefits of a new project. The project also allows us to achieve important operational efficiencies. Simply put, managing one appropriately sized school and campus is less costly than managing two. In terms of project management and cost containment, we have a design team, a project management firm, and a construction partner with considerable experience, strategies, and plans to make sure this project is delivered on time, on budget, and on schedule. They are available for your questions this evening. Next slide, please. This slide overviews the total project costs all in. You'll see that the MSBA has awarded Long Meadow a grant of up to fifty-four point eight million dollars. The local share is projected at ninety-six point eight million dollars. Built into the figures that you see are contingencies to address unexpected, the unexpected, and to address potential market changes. Next slide, please. We have also worked closely with the town manager and the finance director to understand the impact on homeowners. At the outset of borrowing, the impact is expected to be two hundred and forty-seven dollars per hundred thousand dollars of valuation. That impact will decline over the life of the loan. Also worth noting that the project finances are separate and apart from the town's day-to-day annual operating budget. I appreciate your kind consideration and thoughtful attention. I'd like now to introduce School Committee Vice Chair Nicole Schwanier.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two options in front of us. Slide, please. The first option is a no vote. Let me be clear that a no vote is not a vote for renovation. The plan in front of us tonight was developed over many years, following the MSBA's strictly-defined procedures, and reflects a design that prioritizes the students at both of our middle schools. This is the only plan approved by the MSBA. If tonight's vote is closed, the MSBA may allow a short extension for minor adjustments within the project's scope and budget if they believe it will lead to a successful revote. These adjustments may not make any significant alterations to the legally binding project's scope and budget agreement and cannot include a pivot to a different plan. Slide, please. I have to emphasize that a no vote is a decision to stop moving forward with the MSBA and exit their funding pipeline. The town may reapply, but we would face an average seven-year wait. Meanwhile, we would continue to shoulder the expenses of maintaining two buildings that no longer serve the needs of our students. Once accepted, the town would need to self-fund an up-to-date feasibility study and then form a new building committee to review the possible options, just as the current one has done. Slide, please. As a committee and together with other town boards, we have spent the last three years immersed in the review of thirteen project options. The variables we considered will not change with time. Dual renovations will remain fiscally unfeasible, and we do not believe that a new committee would arrive at a new decision. It would be unfair to fund a project for only one middle school while excluding the other. Slide, please. Our second option tonight is a yes vote. If we vote yes, the next step is a ballot vote for the debt exclusion on September thirtieth, and if successful, construction will begin next summer. A yes vote means moving forward with the project the town undertook with diligence and transparency more than a decade ago, and welcoming our students and educators to a new middle school in the two thousand and twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. Michaela Fitzgerald, our chair.
Next slide, please. This project has earned unanimous support from every committee that has studied it: the middle school building committee, the select board, the finance committee, and the school committee. Next slide, please. It is endorsed by the Long Meadow Education Association, representing teachers, parent professionals, administrators, and custodians, and respected community leaders, from local realtors to our state legislators. They have all said yes. What makes us powerful is not just the number of endorsements, but the diversity of voices behind them. Parents, educators, elected officials, community advocates, all looked at the facts, and they all reached the same conclusion: this is the right step for Long Meadow. These endorsements reflect trust, accountability, and confidence in a plan that is both financially responsible and educationally transformative. Next slide, please. Voting yes tonight is about more than a building. It's about our community's future. A yes vote secures state funding now while it's available, and it delivers a new innovative school in just three years for every middle school student in our district. It means a school designed for twenty-first century learning, fostering belonging, reducing bullying, strengthening special education, and embedding enrichment for all. Next slide, please. And when I say twenty-first century enrichment, I mean giving kids opportunities far beyond classrooms that prepare them for the world we grew up in. Yes means preparing them for the world that they're growing into: innovation, creativity, and exploration. Let's give them this chance to our current elementary students tonight. They deserve it.
Thank you. You're over time. Thank you. Thank you very much to the presenters on this motion. We're going to hear from recommendations from boards and committees at this time. I will invite the finance committee to share their recommendation, please.
Hi, Erica Whitehead, Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee recommendation to support this article was unanimous. The Finance Committee is confident that the middle school building committee did the necessary due diligence when deciding to recommend a new consolidated building rather than repairs on the existing buildings, and that this choice is financially optimal for the town. The town has done an excellent job planning the debt service on prior projects to accommodate this borrowing and mitigate the impact on taxpayers. We will be able to bond at our current excellent double-A-plus rating, minimizing the borrowing costs. Thank you.
Thank you. I now invite the Select Board Chair, Josh Levine, to give the Select Board recommendation.
Good evening. Josh Levine, Chair of the Select Board. The Long Meadow Select Board unanimously supported this question. The Long Meadow Select Board supports funding the construction of a consolidated middle school at the site of the current Williams Middle School. Both Williams Middle School and Glenbrook Middle School are nearing the end of their useful lives and will require costly repairs in the future, which will inhibit the town's ability to maintain or exceed. Constructing one consolidated middle school is significantly more cost-effective than renovating both schools, can be done in a timely fashion. The Long Meadow Select Board therefore recommends Article One of the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five special town meeting.
Thank you. Presentation from Mr. Kurt Friedman, speaking in opposition, and then we will turn the floor to discussion. Mr. Friedman has been given ten minutes. Pardon me? You had a school committee recommendation. Mr. Friedman, would you just sit down to the left, please, here? Thank you for your time. School committee recommendation. Are there any other boards seeking recommendations? Hearing none.
Michaela Fitzgerald, Chair of the School Committee. On behalf of the Long Meadow School Committee, we unanimously support a yes vote on the consolidated middle school project. A yes vote secures vital MSBA funding, delivers a safe and innovative school for all middle school students within three years, and advances all of our educational goals. This is the most responsible financial choice for Long Meadow. Building one new school now avoids the higher cost of renovating two aging school facilities and ensures a long-term investment in both our students and our community. We respectfully ask for your support and your yes vote tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman, I'll give you a moment to get settled. And once you're settled, let me know, please. Are you ready? All right. You may begin.
My name is Kurt Friedman. I reside at twenty-four Ridge Road. I have lived in Long Meadow since I was a child, attending grades K through twenty-nine, including Glenbrook Middle School. I am so appreciative of the wonderful education that I've received in Long Meadow. I work as a consulting engineer in many states across the country, and have been a university professor at a local engineering college for over twenty years. I am here tonight to support neighborhood schools. Please feel to visit our website at www.savermiddleschools.org. Next, slide two. Engineers shall create safe and resilient and sustainable infrastructure. They shall consider the current and anticipated needs of society and utilize their knowledge and skills to enhance the quality of life for humanity. Engineers and the fulfillment of their professional duties shall hold paramount the safety, health, and welfare of the public. Next, slide four. Engineers shall... societal and environmental and economic effects. Next, slide five. Neighborhood schools are Long Meadow's standard and best, and best are supported by the Long Meadow Long Range Plan. Next, slide six. In two thousand and twenty, Long Meadow Open Space and Recreation Plan was adopted by our community to protect open spaces. Next, slide seven. This slide shows the land use in Long Meadow. You might want to note the particular features along the Long Meadow Brook. Next, slide eight. This shows a plan of the proposed project. You see Duxbury Lane to the west and Woodside to the east, as well as Williams Street to the south. Next, slide nine. This particular development will raise the elevation of what is now the Fields in front of the school approximately four feet. The difference in elevation to the backyards in Duxbury and Woodside will create an earthen berm ranging between five to potentially eight feet. People living along these streets will lose the view through their backyard. Next, slide ten. There's been considerable discussion on which school is at the center of town, but when you draw that X from the corners of the town where people live, that center, the X, is actually closer to Glenbrook than it is to Williams, but this is actually not relevant at all. Because Long Meadow's definition of what the center of town actually is an impossibility. The X, by the way, falls on the corner of East Primrose and Viscount. Next, slide ten. When we look at the specific topography and terrain of Long Meadow, it is defined and controlled by the Long Meadow Brook and its tributaries. You can see on this diagram where Williams Middle School is and where Glenbrook Middle School is, and you can see the pathways that are available by sidewalks, which are only along Frank Smith, Glenbrook Lane, Merriweather, and Long Meadow Street. You can see to the photograph on the left, there are no sidewalks on Shaker Road. Shaker Road has a sharp turn and steep terrain, and it's narrow. Speed limit has been reduced to thirty miles an hour. This is not a suitable path for our students to walk or ride a bike. Next, slide twelve. The school is designed for six hundred and sixty-five students. You can see here's our enrollment going from nineteen eighty to this year, two thousand and twenty-six. I understand there's a bit of a cushion with that six hundred and sixty-five, but there's a question is that if Long Meadow opens up its spaces to house affordable housing, will we now have increased students? And is this school just too tight? I understand there's an allowance perhaps of fifteen percent, but are we going to run out of space? Do we not have enough headroom for the design of this building? Is this new school too small? Next, slide thirteen. Traffic. The present traffic congestion in front of Williams School is unacceptable. The traffic studies did not address a reasonably conservative condition where we have increased number of cars to transport children in inclement weather. The weather studies were done during dry conditions, not in the wintertime, but in April, late April and late March. It is not a valid traffic study. Next, slide fourteen. Another view of the traffic congestion and gridlock in front of the school. The number of cars that we expect to go to the new school is three times the number of cars that create the traffic conditions you see in these photographs. Next, slide fifteen. This is a mapping of the traffic risk areas in our town, and now we're going to zoom in. Next, slide sixteen. You can see the hotspots. The green is Glenbrook, the pink is Williams, and the blue is Long Meadow High School. You can see the intersections of Frank Smith and Williams. You can see what I refer to as the Big Y Triangle. You can see Grassy Gutter and Bliss Road, and you can see the corner of Burbank and Bliss Road, which is a category F. So all the intersections surrounding what is now Williams Middle School are category Es and Fs. Neighborhood schools minimize traffic risk. We should not place more students. That would just create greater traffic risk. Next- Next, Slide 17. Our various parks, Russell Field, Longmeadow High School, Wolf Swamp, all have irrigation systems with artesian wells and real turf. Asher turf is not our community standard. Next, Slide 18. Location, location, location. Loss of the Glenbrook Neighborhood School and greater commuting distances for students and parents equals reduced property values for Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook Sector. The median $500,000 home will pay $1,235 more in taxes a year, and after the 30-year note, will pay cumulative of $26,770. Next, Slide 19. When you look at the various parameters of Glenbrook, Williams, and Longmeadow Middle School, you'll see that Longmeadow Middle School is actually very condensed. Look at the acreage, total of 36 acres between Glenbrook and Williams. It'll be reduced to only the 16. Glenbrook has 58% more square feet per student than the proposed school, and Williams has 28% more. Glenbrook has 460-seat auditorium, and Williams has 500, total of 960. The proposed school will only have 390 seats in the auditorium. In terms of fields, we have a total of seven between Glenbrook and Williams, and the proposed school, there will only be one, albeit students will be able to visit the neighboring high school field. The Williams 16-acre site is simply too small for a consolidated school. Next steps could include a renovation of both schools. Now, we've been told that you can't do two schools at the same time. Hoyok was given an exception because of their dire situation. They received an exception from the MSBA. We did renovation of both schools in 2002 and 2003 with the Wolf Swamp and Blueberry Hill School. Next, Slide 21.
30 seconds.
Yes. The cost of renovated school is less with reimbursement of $82 million. Next, Slide 22. There are various disqualifying features, including loss of neighborhood schools and traffic grades ENFs, and I'll let you read that. And I'm going to just close on Slide 23. Our neighborhood middle schools have been tried and proven for six decades and have enabled a wonderful community. Hold paramount the safety, health, and welfare of our children. Please vote no on Article 1.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. We will now have the floor open for discussion, and we will start in the gymnasium. I see someone at the yellow microphone. State your name and address.
Bobby Barquette, 35 Plymouth Road. I'd like to offer a motion for an amendment to the article.
The motion has been sent to me in writing beforehand. You may make your motion to amend, please.
Yes. Make the motion to amend, whereas it is the opinion of the Special Town Meeting that the following measure constitutes an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the peace, health, safety, or convenience of the town under Section 29A4 of the Home Rule Charter of the Town of Longmeadow, specifically due to the fact that the time is of the essence in the approval of the Longmeadow Middle School construction project in order to assure funding for the project from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, otherwise known as the MSBA. Therefore, the following measure shall be and hereby is adopted as an emergency measure which shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
And am I correct that you had wanted to put that as a preamble to Article 1?
That is correct.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. I will explain the process after I invite Mr. Barquette to speak to that motion. Go ahead, Mr. Barquette.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This amendment is a reprise of one passed overwhelmingly at the town meeting approval for the funding of the Longmeadow High School project. Section 29 of the Town Charter allows for referendum on town meeting votes. A referendum can be called by a petition of as little as 3% of the voters. This would add at least 50 days to the process and put funding and safety at risk and cost the town money for another ballot vote. The immediate funding of the middle school project is necessary to address the safety and security of our schools, and any delay in that funding puts us further at risk. Glenbrook classroom design is a safety issue. If you've ever been there, Williams does not have a fire suppression system, speaking directly to safety alone.
So, Mr. Barquette has made a motion to amend Article 1 by adding a preamble to Article 1. We will discuss whether or not we would like to have this as an amendment. We are not discussing the merits of the motion on Article 1. We are only now discussing whether we want to amend it as Mr. Barquette has specified. We will start with questions and comments on this amendment. I will invite someone who is speaking opposed to this motion first. Is there anyone seeking recognition in the gym to speak opposed to this motion? If none, I will recognize... There is someone. Thank you. Okay. If you're speaking opposed, could you kindly just move over to the red microphone? It'll help me keep it straight. Appreciate that. Thank you very much, sir.
Michael Callick, 458 William Street. I don't understand the focus of this amendment. This is something that I'm not prepared for as a town meeting member, and given the controversy that's between the two sides of this particular vote and this particular article, this amendment... I don't even know what amendment it doesn't... I don't know how it bears on this particular article, and I think it confuses the voters as to what we're doing here tonight. We all know why we're here. This amendment focuses on confusing the issue, and I question... I'd urge the town meeting to vote down this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for procedural matters, because I was given this amendment proposal in advance, I have consulted with the Massachusetts School Building Association Authority, excuse me. I also consulted with town council. It is my determination that the amendment is in order. If you have questions, we can answer those questions. I now turn to somebody at the green microphone to speak in favor of the motion to amend.
Sure. Armand Ray, 96 Shady Side Drive. I'm also the chairman of the Middle School Building Committee. I urge an emphatic yes on this amendment. This amendment, what it does is no vote at town meeting is final. We have what is called in Section 2.9 of our charter, referendum. So within five days, 3% of the voters could sign a petition, which would then force the Select Board to schedule... It would be certified. Then the Select Board would have to certify a vote within 12 days to have another election within 35 days at the ballot. What this does is what we just heard. This gives everybody the chance to say, this is the decision we're making tonight. We are not going to let this be hijacked by a referendum when the will of the people is made tonight, whichever way it goes. So I vote... We did this with the high school, overwhelmingly approved. And for the matters of safety, given the recent school events that have happened, the open classrooms within Glenbrook, the fire suppression within Williams, the traffic... I mean, they brought the traffic up, and we've done everything we can do within this plan to address the safety issues of this traffic for the kids in town. I vote yes, and I encourage everybody else who wants this school project to go forward to vote yes tonight.
Okay. We're speaking on the amendment. I am now going to see if there's any raised hand icons in the auditorium. Are there any raised hand icons in the auditorium? No. I shall now turn to the cafeteria. Are there any raised hand icons in the cafeteria? There are no raised hand icons in the cafeteria. In the Business Technology Center? And in the atrium area? All right. We shall now come back to the gym. What's that? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. The auditorium has just raised their hand. I am going to turn to the auditorium first before we get back to this room. I'll come back to you. We'll get back to you. I now turn to the auditorium, and I want to note that when you are seeking to speak in an overflow room, take a deep breath, pause for four seconds, because that will allow us to have a smoother transition. So we now turn to the auditorium. Assistant Moderator Rodriguez. Rodriguez? Rodriguez? Rodriguez?
See what...
Kristen Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road, Longmeadow Mask. Okay. My question is a question on clarification to further explain the request to the amendment. Does the vote tonight on the amendment omit further vote on the ballot as required?
I will answer that question. It is a process question. The answer is no. If the motion to amend passes, and if the main motion as amended is approved by a two-thirds vote, the election on September 30th would still happen, and that vote would go on. It does not change anything in terms of that process. In the auditorium, is there anyone seeking to oppose to the motion to amend or in favor? If there's no other hands raised, then we will go back to the gymnasium. Sir, at the red mic...
Richard Engelson, 31 Woodside Drive. I've been here for three hours. I'm tired. This issue's been going so long. I don't want to come back again. I think I'm going to vote no.
At the green microphone, sir? Name and address in your position, please.
I don't wish to speak for the...
Name and address, please.
Armande Bear, 180 Converse Street. I don't wish to speak for his amendment.
So is there any... We can come right to a vote on the amendment. We will turn to Mr. Gold at the red microphone.
Mark Gold, 129 Avondale Road. I think I need to explain to the people in town what this amendment does and why the bylaw is in place that the amendment seeks to bypass. I think we've all heard from people in town, I'd like to go to the town meeting, but I'm elderly, I can't be there for whatever reason it is. And because of that, we put in place in town meeting bylaws a provision that says if the town meeting votes in a particular way, and enough people who didn't come to town meeting don't believe in that, they have the right and the authority to call a referendum to overturn the decision of the town meeting. That's what this motion, by setting an emergency or calling this an emergency vote, seeks to bypass or disqualify that provision in our town meeting or town bylaws. If you believe that there are people, and I believe there are people who can't be here, if they really want to get 3% of the vote, and they really want... Or 3% of the electorate really to sign a petition, and they really want to try to overturn a town meeting vote, that means that there are a whole lot of people who didn't show up here, and therefore you would vote against this amendment.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there someone who would like to speak on the motion to amend at the green microphone? Yes.
Hi. Cameron Burke, 25 Woolworth Street. I am in Abutter, and I am the Chair of the Longmeadow Spark Committee, and I support the middle school building project, and I urge you all to vote yes tonight so that all of our attendance here tonight is heard and that this can't be overturned. Since we all showed up tonight and we all spent the time here, I think we should have our voices heard. Thank you.
Is there any further... Please, I will ask... Please, no displays. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend, or are we ready to come to a vote on the motion to amend? If we are ready to come to a vote, I will ask everyone to please be seated. You can come back into the line when we are ready to come to a vote on the main motion. As a reminder, this vote to amend to invoke the Charter Section 29A4 to establish a preamble preventing a referendum on this that is separate from the existing referendum. So it establishes a preamble that prevents a referendum being... From being conducted on top of the one that is already being conducted. If you'd like to establish a preamble and do that, you would be voting yes. If you would not want to add the preamble, you would be voting no. This vote, according to the Charter, requires a two-thirds vote to add a preamble. I invite you to remember that the vote will be open. You press 1 for yes, and you'll press 2 for no when I announce it. The vote is now open. I ask that you kind of keep it to a quieter dull roar than that in case I need to hear something from my colleagues who are staffing accessibility desks.
So the stream cut out 20 minutes ago. They don't know what's happening.
Call them. Yes. This is auditorium. Gymnasium. We are separately getting results from the... We are also getting... This is auditorium. Gymnasium, auditorium, gymnasium. We are separately getting results from the ETC. We are also getting results from ADA rooms. In the atrium, I don't know. I need to check whether there's anybody there. Hi Audrey, are you able to follow the meeting at all?
No.
Okay. Are you interested in making updates on what's happening?
Well, so they started the meeting, but they passed orders and then they sent a motion. So we haven't gotten to the point of owning yet. But they, but they're asking for people to vote on an amendment that would call an emergency vote so that we can move forward more quickly with the project. So it would mean that there wouldn't be any claim for referendum. That we would just then go to September 30th and everybody would vote and if we move forward. Is this something you would like to support?
I'm going to announce that there's 30 more seconds. 30 more seconds in which to vote. 30 more seconds to vote on the amendment. Please ensure that anybody in the hallway who wants to vote knows they have a limited time to get to their voting room to vote on the amendment.
Thank you so much. I, it will be tonight, yes. Yeah, thank you. Okay, bye-bye.
Okay. I'm now going to be taking the tallies from additional rooms. One moment, please. Can you come here and once you're set with that, tell me the numbers? I am declaring the vote closed. Jim, auditorium cafeteria, I need numbers. Peter? Move back, please. Look at, look at, watch me. Please, please watch me. One, three.
Three, one, you got it, perfect.
Now, no's?
Four, twenty-four.
Four, two, four.
Up, there you go, you got it.
Okay, ADA access room. Could you please confirm with me? We have, what is the total? Please do the total. Yep. So three yes in the ADA room, two no. And there's nothing in the ETC, correct? There's nothing in the ETC. That one is not being used. ETC is not being used. Yes. We're close to announcing the results. Hold one moment, please. With a total of 1,762 total votes, there were 1,336 yes, 426 no. The motion to amend passes by a two-thirds affirmative vote. We shall now, we shall now turn to discussion of the main motion as amended. Is there anyone in the gym seeking recognition on the main motion? Yes, name and address, please.
Armande Bear from 180 Converse Street. I'm a graduate of the United States Merchant Marine Academy. It's one of the United States' five federal service academies. I'd like to speak on this issue because I saw firsthand the effect that an out-of-date and crumbling infrastructure does to education. Despite funding from the United States government, backing by Congress and a recognition as one of the most important missions of the federal service academies, my school was crumbling. We had little to no HVAC, leaking roofs, buildings that were condemned and not used despite teaching people who were going to go overseas in the United States Navy, fly aircraft for the United States Air Force, serve on the front lines and maintain the US Army Corps of Engineers and sail in the United States Merchant Marine. I urge everyone here to vote yes because government funding, especially from something like the MSBA, takes a long time to acquire. You must act now and give the future of Long Meadow and of course, the future of everyone around us a quality educational facility. Without it, there are children who will be left behind. There will be people who do not get the special assistance they require. Voting yes today gives that opportunity to every child who would be going to middle school in Long Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next at the yellow microphone, please.
Thank you. Bill DeGiulio, 8 Woodside Drive. Two-part question. What is the plan for the Glenbrook property if the proposed school vote passes this evening? And if the answer is what we have been told in the past, that no decision has been made, is it likely that due to the passing of the Affordable Housing Act in August of 2024, which requires all communities in Massachusetts to maintain 10% of their housing stock as affordable housing? And given that Long Meadow currently stands at just 4.7%, is it likely that the Glenbrook property will be developed as mixed use or affordable housing? And I think the people in that part of town deserve an answer to what's going to happen to that property if this vote passes. Thank you.
Thank you. I will direct that to the school committee. Town manager will address the question of the use.
Thank you, Town Manager Lynn Simmons. It is very early to speculate on what could or could not happen at the Glenbrook site right now. There would be a robust public process, which includes a committee formed in conjunction with myself and the select board. But before we even get to that point, it's still a school and it's under control of the school committee right now. When they no longer need that parcel, they would then turn it over to the select board, who would then start a process at that point. So it's way too premature right now to speculate what could or could not happen there.
Thank you. We'll hear from somebody at the red microphone.
Giuseppeina Camerata from 397 Williams Street. First of all, I appreciate the hard work of the select board and the Long Meadow School Building Committee, but I must speak up, not to criticize, but to advocate for smarter choices. A combined middle school may seem efficient, but it overlooks key concerns that affect our children, our neighborhoods and our town future. Contrary to claim that the MSBA doesn't allow funding for renovations, in fact Glenbrook received funds to renovate the open space classrooms. Prior to the feasibility study, why weren't the residents given two options? A combined middle school or renovating the two schools over several summers to minimize disruption to the students? Instead, the feasibility study recommended combining the two schools and rushing into a plan that sacrifices space, accessibility and community values. Also, what about the traffic safety? Williams Street is a major artery for emergency services. Traffic is already a challenge with 337 students. What happens when that number jumps to 664-plus students? My children thrived in the Long Meadow school system despite aging buildings. We owe it to future generations to do better, not just faster. Let's explore smarter solutions like two modern schools that serve all neighborhoods and preserves our education. Vote no, not to delay progress, but to demand thoughtful, community-driven solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall now turn to the next room, the auditorium, for the next series of speakers. If there is any raised hand icon in the auditorium. There is none. We will turn to the cafeteria. Is there any raised hand icon in the cafeteria? There is none. There are none. Anything in the ADA room? No. So, and there's no other rooms that are in use? We will come back to the gymnasium. We'll start with a question. We'll go to the opposed and then in favor.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have a question.
Name and address, please.
Excuse me?
Please state your name.
Oh, yes. Richard Engelson, 31 Woodside Drive. Tiny town of Long Meadow is the highest tax rate in the Commonwealth. We saw on the, right now, my tax rate is 11K per year. According to the information that was posted, will my tax rate go up $1,200 next year, the year after, and the year after? Where will I be? Should I plan on retiring or shall I keep on working? That's my question.
Thank you. I don't think anyone here is going to be able to answer about personal finance. However, we will get the town manager or the town finance director to speak on the finance. The question concerned the rate, the tax rate and the burden on taxpayers. Lynn Simmons.
Concerning the impact on individual taxpayers or property owners, we did develop a calculator that you could type in your exact property value and it spit out what you would expect to pay in property taxes over the entire life of this borrowing. But on average, it's $247 per $100,000 of value of your property.
Thank you. We'll turn to the red microphone, please.
Can I have a rebuttal or question at?
Sir, we're moving on. Microphone?
Hi, Donna Fisher, 33 Duxbury Lane. Long Meadow Public Schools prides itself in its ability to provide a sound education in evidence-based principles and research. Yet, the decision to consolidate to a larger school does not jibe with empirically-based research that supports the superiority of smaller neighborhood schools. It is no accident that property, private schools are usually smaller in size. Smaller schools are more conducive to optimum student learning and higher grades. Smaller class sizes foster close teacher-student relationships. Moreover, they provide greater social and emotional support for students versus larger schools. Within larger schools, there tends to be a loss of personalization for students, which is especially difficult for those students who feel troubled, are gifted, or don't see the benefits of their unique gifts and personality. Students are less likely to fall through the cracks or feel cut off from the school culture in small school, smaller schools. Students who attend smaller neighborhood schools have more positive student behaviors as measured by levels of attendance, discipline problems, theft, substance abuse. Smaller schools provide more opportunities for students to gain learning experiences in curriculum-related clubs and co-curricular activities such as band, chorus, jazz and theater. Within larger schools, there tends to be an increased competition for these opportunities. What's at stake is not so much a new school, but the future of our children. Keep our neighborhood schools and renovate them to modern standards. Please vote no for consolidation of middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone, please.
Cameron Burke, 25 Woolworth Street. I just want to say thank you to the entire middle school building committee, the select board, the finance committee and everybody involved who wholeheartedly worked on this, put all of their time and energy into this. We appreciate it and I think all the facts are out there now. We understand the cost. We understand the implications to our homeowners' costs and this is the right opportunity. This is a smart decision for our town to move forward. I believe this is the right decision for our children and the future generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now just pause. Please hold your applause. Any other raised hand icons in any other rooms? All right, we will turn back to a question microphone at the auditorium. Yes, sir.
My name is, my name is Don Holland, 43 Silver Birch Road in town. I have three que-
I'm sorry.
I have three questions. In the high school, after a similar motion was passed, the town had to borrow $27 million for furnishings. What will be the anticipated cost for furnishings, including, including computers?
And what are your other two questions, sir?
Yes. What is the estimate for additional busing that will be needed for What is the estimate for additional busing that will be needed for kids that are in Wolf Swamp and other areas that are one mile away from the school?
Okay, and your third question?
Third question was, will there be lockers in this school for the children?
Thank you. I will direct these questions to different people. Regarding borrowing money for furnishing and computers, is Superintendent O'Shea or the Chair of the Building, Superintendent O'Shea, are you able to answer this question? For furnishings, just on the furnishings and then busing. Pardon me? So I will direct these three, three questions to Superintendent O'Shea on borrowing money, furnishings, computers, the estimate for busing, and lockers.
Marty O'Shea, Superintendent Schools, thank you for the question. All furniture, fixtures, equipment, and instructional technology is included in the costs that were depicted earlier, so we don't anticipate any additional borrowing associated with furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. Lockers will be included in this project. As far as buses, right now, we have about four buses that serve at the middle level. Our, the bus lane design would allow for, I believe it's six or seven buses. The exact number of buses is to be determined, but it could be anywhere from one to two additional buses based on our current busing practices, but those are certainly subject to review by the school committee as we approach the opening of a new school.
Thank you. We will turn to the red microphone, please. State your name and address.
My name is Teresa DiGiulio, 8 Woodside Drive, and I just want to say that the two middle schools now were put where they are because of the topography of our town. We have a brook running through both properties. That is why the schools are where they are. There are children, obviously, on both sides of town, and the schools should be renovated. People have bought homes over there thinking they're going to give their children the same lifestyle they had growing up here in town, and then now you're going to take that away from them. That's not that very fair to that side of town. No one in this room is thinking of others who live in this town. We should be a community and come together for the whole of the town. Would you buy a home on that side of town if you're not going to have a school in your neighborhood so your kids can take a bus or have to be driven to school? Or are you going to buy a house on this side of town where your kids can walk and bike to school and have a healthier lifestyle? Studies have shown obesity, diabetes in children have gone up because schools were out in urban areas. Today, they see that children should be walking and biking to school for a healthier lifestyle for the entire town of Long Meadow, not just one side of town, the whole town. Vote no for our children's health and well-being and a better education. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to the, please hold your applause. Thank you very much. I'm just checking, any other microphone, no one else is seeking recognition? At the green microphone, please. Name and address.
Diane Porfilio, 8 Cheshire Drive, Long Meadow, Mass. Good evening. I am the co-president of SEAL, the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow. On behalf of SEAL, I would like to express our strong support for the new middle school project. The updated facilities and thoughtful design will create an inclusive and supportive environment for all students, particularly those with emotional, behavioral, and other disabilities. Features such as improved lighting, modernized classrooms, and overall layout built with accessibility in mind will better meet the needs of our special education students. Mostly, importantly, it will ensure that every child has the opportunity to learn in an environment designed for their success. SEAL commends the town's commitment to building a middle school that reflects the needs of all learners. We believe this project will have a positive and lasting impact on students and families for many years to come. Vote yes.
Thank you. We, please, no applause. Thank you. At the question microphone, yes.
Mark Gold, 129 Avondale Road. We heard from the town manager about the school committee's control of Glenbrook School. I have two questions. The first one is, will the school committee relinquish their control of the Academy Drive land, so-called Water Tower property? The development of that land could add significant revenue to the town and help offset the cost of a new school. So if so, when? And if not, why not? My second question is whether the demolition costs for Glenbrook and Williams Middle Schools are included in the current $151 million cost of the middle school? And if not, what are those costs estimated to be, and how would those costs be funded?
Thank you. I will direct the school committee question to the school committee about your plans on relinquishing control of the land. If you do not have a position on this, state that you do. Come to the microphone and address the question, please. The question is, do you relinquish control of the water, so-called Water Tower land? If...
We don't have a position on this.
Michaela Fitzgerald, School Committee Chair. And then, thank you. And then for the other question on demolition costs, I'll ask the Superintendent O'Shea
The cost of taking down the Williams facility is included in the project. It's subject to reimbursement. That's not the case with the Glenbrook property.
Thank you for the answers. We are now going to turn to the auditorium. There's a hand raised in the auditorium. Name and address in the auditorium, and I will do my best to repeat the statement if anyone can't hear the statement.
Alex Arnold, 24 Crescent Road. Alex Arnold, 24 Crescent Road, Long Meadow, Mass. I call to question.
The motion to call the question is not yet in order. We have a bylaw that prevent, thank, thank you for, for trying. The, the bylaw prevents me from accepting a motion to call the question and end debate until five have spoken in favor, five have spoken against. By my tally, we have three in favor, three opposed. So the motion is not yet in order. Is there anyone further in the auditorium who wishes to speak on the question? Okay, the answer is no. We will go back. Any other rooms? No, we will stay back in this room. At the question microphone, please.
Yes, good evening. Richard Camerata, 397 Williams Street. If the proposed combined middle school project passes, why would we transition from our current safe and walkable neighborhood schools to a situation where many of the children from the Glenbrook area would be required to bus or be driven to the new combined school in direct conflict with the National Safe Routes to School Act passed in 2021, which is administered by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, primarily for the protection and health of primary and middle school children?
Thank you. I will see if the superintendent can answer that question.
Thank you, Marty O'Shea, Superintendent. I think that was a key consideration in the selection of Williams as the preferred site to sort of maximize the number of students that could access the campus.
Thank you. We have a, has had the lines here speaking. If they have the hand raised, I will see, go to them.
You should be appearing here. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, go.
I am Adam Galucci. I live at 7 Ellington Street, and I just want to voice part of a yes vote for this project. I think it's the future of Long Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold your applause, please. At the red microphone, please.
Hi, Ron Rice, 29 Wheel Meadow Drive. I think, for me, a lot of good things have been said. For me, the, the major point here is I, I want to just have us think as a town about everybody. We all care about our children. We care about our, their education, their safety. That's what we have in common. This, as had, has been proposed to us, has been very one-sided, my opinion is. You have a fleshed-out plan about a new school, but renovations seem to have fallen by the wayside there. We, we, we don't have a fleshed-out plan there. So this was the driving force. The 11th-hour preamble, whatever you want to, I don't know what it's called, also don't appreciate that. The fact that in the presentations, we are given the feeling of that this is a rush, a rush to spend $150 million, doesn't sound right to me. Whatever positive impact a new school may bring, we have to remember there are going to be people who are going to be negatively impacted by that. Older people on fixed budgets, retired people. Taxes are already very high in this town. Potential depreciation of some house value besides just the neighborhood feeling of a school that's in walking distance. So to me, as a town, I don't think we were given enough good information, enough good data about how to make a decision about this, and I feel it was put to us in a way where we're feeling a bit pressured now. I think this is a lot of money. I think we should take into account everybody and how they're affected by this, and I would say to people to think very carefully about their vote. I would vote no, of course.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone in the auditorium? In the auditorium? Can I recognize the auditorium?
Shaquilla Sandor, wait. Sorry. Better project.
Speak into the laptop.
Shaquilla Sandor, 45 Viscount. I would like to give a pro comment. Obviously, a lot of work has gone into this, and I hope that the person after me is ready to call a vote.
Thank you for your comment. We will now turn back to the gymnasium. At the question microphone.
Hi, Bill DiGiulio, 8 Woodside Drive. I, I have another question. The renovation cost for the two schools was quoted at about $159 million. And if you go to the MSB website, they have very accurate and specific data on the cost of new schools and renovation ads. And if, if you utilize their data, the average cost per square foot for renovation should be somewhere in the vicinity of $685.
Sir, I'm, I'm not going to permit this question and renovate. We are discussing the building of the project. If you can get a question geared more toward the building, the project before us.
Well, my question would be, build versus renovate seems to be about the same cost, but if you go to the MSB website, a renovation should cost about $115 million. What's the extra $45 million for in their estimate? I don't believe that estimate. Thank you.
So I, I'd like to get some clarification from you, sir. Are you asking about the cost differential between a renovation and a build? Note that the renovation is not before us. However, it was part of the MSBA, the Middle School Building Project, and so I would invite the Middle School Building Project Chair to come to the microphone, if he is present. There he is. To address the history of how you chose between renovation and building new, what the cost differential is. This is Armand Ray.
Armand Ray, 96 Shady Side Drive, Chair of the Middle School Building Committee, Chair of the Middle School Building Committee for the last three years of my life. So over the, we've gathered various experts within the industries. We have with us Colliers, JWA, which are architects, and newly, we just brought on Fontaine, a very local company that we're glad to have on board right now. And based upon what they advised us over the last three years, we looked at 12 to 13 different site plans, including renovation, including renovation addition, including building a school just at Glenbrook, including building just a school at Williams. And as I already said, we chose the central location because, as somebody pointed out, we are looking out for the health of the children, and it was the most centrally-located place for somebody to ride their bike and/or to walk to school. Along with that, those experts gave us the cost of renovation, which, when you give the new code updates, which Long Meadow is an adopter of the Stretch Energy Code, which goes above and beyond what is required by law, the, the costs bore themselves out, and, and we made a decision based upon the best available information of the experts that we had.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. We are now turning to the red microphone.
Justice Gorrery, 92 Concord Road. I'm going to say soft no, just to get us closer to pulling the vote.
Please, thank you. In the auditorium, there are people seeking recognition. We'll turn to the auditorium.
Hey, Sanji Pritsagani, 9 Pinewood Hills, Long Meadow Housing Authority member. I just wanted to submit, I'm, I'm pro the combined project, the combined middle school. Just someone had mentioned that there was a question earlier, if Glenbrook were to be decommissioned, would it become low-income housing? And the answer obviously is, it's, it's a very complicated process, and it's not something that you think, okay, you have a decommissioned building, it's automatically going to qualify to be low-income housing. Something has to, there's got to be a 40B permit, which is a really complicated process. So I hope people don't think that just because you have a decommissioned building in town, it would automatically qualify for some type of low-income housing permit from the state. So if that swing you one way or the other, it should be a non-factor, and I'm pro the combined middle school. I guess, can we call the question?
No.
Going to ask somebody if there's somebody else in the auditorium? Because we'll recognize three people in that room if there are three people. Otherwise, we will turn back to the gym, because there are people lined up in the gym.
Alex Arnold, 24 Crescent Road, call to question.
The motion to call the question is not debatable. It requires five and five having spoken in favor and against. We have that with five and six. It is, so kindly sit down. We're going to be taking a vote on whether to call the question. So let me, this is to you. There is a two-step process. There are two votes that we may be taking. The first vote is whether we want to end debate. There were people in line, so we, and the vote has been made and seconded, so we must have that vote. If that vote is approved with a two-thirds yes, we will then take the second vote coming right to a main motion vote to the last question. So I will direct the clerk's staff to pause any check-ins if there are- to pause any check-ins, if there are any, and to go to their voting room. When I call that the vote is now open, you press 1 to end debate, 2 to keep talking. The choice is yours. Ready? The vote is now open. Is anyone getting checked in? Wow. And folks, I see folks standing up, which is perfectly fine to do. Don't -- I'm not standing shaming here. I just ask that you be patient and please wait to leave, if you can, until we have announced the vote on the final motion. The two-step process. If this motion gets approved, we go to a final vote. Just keeping that in mind. I'm going to give you 30 seconds more for the vote to be open. Okay. I will record the yes vote for you and I will be calling back in just a few minutes to ask you about the name, okay? Okay, thank you so much. If you are in the gymnasium and you have a red dot on your clicker, this is important. If you have a red dot on your clicker and you are in this room, in the auditorium, or in this room, please, please leave. This is only for people with the green lanyards on in the gymnasium. There are some without lanyards that have zero stickers on them. That's okay. But if you got a red dot, that's something different. Anything more? I'm going to end the vote. Thank you. Red dots only work in the auditorium. I am going to call an end to the vote. The vote is now over on calling the question. Please wait for the tally. All right. The numbers, please, for these three rooms. I need the numbers. I can't see that one. 6, 5, 7, no, 8, 9. ADA room? Thank you. 6, yes, 0, no. And there's no B here. So I've got 1752 votes. 1, 6, 6, 3, yes, 8, 9, no. Motion passes 2/3. I have the tally for the vote on calling the question. This is a question about whether we're ending debate. It is not a question on the final motion. If you'd like to vote on the final motion, stay put. Please, 1,752 votes. That's 1,663, yes, 89, no. That is a 2/3 affirmative vote to call the question. We shall now come -- We shall now come directly to a vote on the main motion as amended. This is the last content vote. After this, we have to have a motion to dissolve the meeting. And that will be by a voice vote. I will give you instructions to make sure that you know to proceed to take your voting device and put it in one of the red receptacles if you choose to leave and not dissolve the meeting. Do not hand it to anyone. Please make sure you put it in the red receptacles at each exit. The vote is now open on the final main motion as amended. I urge you to stay. If there's any problem, once you leave, you may not re-enter. So I urge you to stay while the vote is still in process. And staff in the hallways, please make sure that you direct anyone who is in any hallway that the vote is now open. We will have 30 seconds left for the vote to be open. You have 30 seconds left to vote. If you don't see an "okay" on your clicker, no vote has been received. If you see the "okay" and a number, you're good. Last one? All right. The vote is now closed. I have not announced the tally. Once I announce the tally, then the vote will be done. Anne, is this yours?
Oh, yes, all too.
I have the tally of the vote on the final motion as amended on the middle school building project under Article 1 with 1,776 votes. There were 1,374 yes. And please wait, 402 no. The motion passes with a 2/3 affirmative vote. I shall now take a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion is unanimous. I declare the special town meeting dissolved.